Good evening. Tonight is November seventeenth, two thousand and seventeen, at seven o'clock, and this is the planning board. The first and only item on our agenda this evening is the discussion of the proposed zoning bylaw, Regulation and Sale of Marijuana Not Medically Prescribed. I'd like to start by just covering where we've been so far on this issue. On November first, we had a public listening session, at which time we received public comment, and since that day, last Wednesday, we've also been receiving written public comment, and I encourage folks here tonight, and folks who may be watching at home, to continue to send us public comment, either using the Contact Me button on the town website, or emailing our Director of Community Planning, Mary Savage Dunham, directly, because she is sharing all of the comment that we're receiving with the entire board. So tonight, just to lay out a roadmap for this evening, what we want to do tonight is continue to hear some public comment for a period of time, but then to move to deliberation, because it's time for our board to start. We haven't discussed this at all yet, so it's time to move to deliberation, at which point we are not planning to have a back-and-forth at that time with the public. What we would do instead is deliberate with one another, because we, as you know, have a December first deadline coming, by which time we need to decide what zoning law -- bylaw amendments we are submitting to the Board of Selectmen for the warrant. So with that being said, and just to be clear, just to take that one step further, there will be time -- we will continue to receive public comment, and there will be time for additional public comment in January, once the public hearings start on all of the zoning bylaw amendments. So, that being said, I would like to open it up at this time for public comment. I would ask that anyone who wishes to speak, please step up to the microphone, because this is being recorded. We're not live, I'm told, but it is being recorded, and if you would state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Lori McCarthy, 143 Otis Street. I'm also the co-chair of Hingham Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition here in town. And what I didn't mention, I did speak last week, and what I failed to mention was that I did grow up in this town, and I have moved back to raise my children in this town. I have four children in Hingham, being raised in Hingham. So tonight, I wanted to talk about, this past week, just coincidentally, this past weekend, my co-chair, Kristin Arut, and I were able to attend a summit, a prevention summit, and the guest speaker was a gentleman by the name of Dr. Kevin Hill, who is an addiction psychiatrist at Beth Israel Hospital, and a expert subject speaker, expert speaker on the subject of marijuana. So, we learned a great deal. Kristin's going to go into it a lot more than me, but one of the things that I wanted to talk about, what I really took away from Saturday, was to, again, to reiterate the fact that we are not talking about medical marijuana here. That the -- there's no confusion that there -- the town and the residents are not confused over, we're not, we're not talking about medical marijuana, we're talking about recreational marijuana and accessories for sale, you know, in our town. And so what was pointed out to us by Dr. Hill is, back in the seventies, when I was growing up in Hingham, the eighties, and the sixties, seventies, and eighties, the potency with marijuana, and the THC potency back then was about three to four percent THC. Nowadays, currently, the potency factor, THC factor in marijuana is roughly around twelve percent. You can also purchase marijuana that has potency factors of twenty percent, thirty percent, and the really dangerous and harmful uses are in sort of slang words for dabbing, using wax or oils, and those can be up to eighty percent. So it is, I would argue that it is, it is not the marijuana of our yesteryear, for those that don't know that, and I think it's an important factor. The other thing, yesterday, I was on Facebook, and I'm friends with South Shore Hospital, and South Shore Hospital posted the following. Doctors in our emergency department have noticed an increase in admissions for cannabis hyperemesis syndrome, cyclic vomiting, often seen in young males who frequently use marijuana. Our emergency medicine team is watching this and many other trends as pot becomes more prevalent in Massachusetts, driven by data from other states with legal marijuana. So I think that that's, you know, interest, you know, important to note. The chair of the social hospital emergency room, Dr. Jason Tracy, was also at the conference this weekend, and talked about some other related, you know, things that they're seeing in the ER as a result of people coming in that are highly intoxicated on marijuana, that do not understand the potency factors, and, you know, other, other things like that. So the other thing that I wanted to bring up was, if you look at Colorado, where marijuana's been legal, some of the things that have increased there is drug driving, so people under the influence of things other than alcohol, ER visits, as it relates to marijuana, to edibles getting in the wrong hands, and things like that. And the other sort of alarming number that increased was the percent of ten-year-olds that have had their first use or first experience with marijuana. That number has also increased, and, you know, it could be because even if you are responsibly using marijuana in your home, just like alcohol, you're responsibly using alcohol, it does not mean that the children in your home are not at risk at getting into the liquor cabinet, so to speak, or the medicine cabinet. It's why we are in the current opioid epidemic, a lot of it is. There are a lot of things that happen, where people going into medicine cabinets and trying these drugs, so as far as our children go. My, you know, my, my biggest concern and around this topic is our youth, is our children, and in prevention, in the world of prevention, they look at two evidence-based issues that prevention coalitions and prevention organizations work on, protective factors and risk factors. And for me, I think the question to the town is, what do we want to be as a community? What does Hingham want to be? Do we want to contribute to risk, or do we want to contribute to supporting those protective factors? Addiction is not just a roll of the dice anymore. We know through science now what some of the characteristics are, and what some of the risk factors are now, and so we should be doing everything that we can, as a community, as individuals, as parents, employers, to mitigate any risk, you know, for a trajectory path to addiction. I think it's our responsibility, I think we owe it to our children, to protect them as much as we possibly can. It's hard enough with alcohol, it's hard enough with prescription medication. You know, I can't imagine adding another mind-altering substance to the equation. So I thank you for your time, and...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please, thank you.
Good evening. Kristin Arut, 388 Gardner Street. As Lori mentioned, I'm the other co-chair of Hingham Cares, the Substance Misuse Prevention Coalition here in town, and she is a tough act to follow. She just did an amazing job of providing a summary of some of the things that we learned on Sunday at the conference, highlighting risk factors in our youth. What I would like to focus on, again, with regard to the comments that Dr. Hill made in the workshop that we listened, or that we sat in, entitled Marijuana Maths and Myth and Facts. He outlined some misconceptions that the public, and in particular adolescents, have with regard to marijuana, and some of those have been presented before the board, namely that it's not harmful, it's not addictive, and it doesn't cause withdrawals. He also described what's called a continuum of danger, which is a scale of sorts that's used to gauge harmfulness. One argument that people use when discussing marijuana is that it's not as bad as something else. However, as Dr. Hill pointed out, just because something is not as harmful as something else does not mean that it's not harmful. Positive messaging about marijuana has had an impact on our children. The perception of risk of marijuana for students in grades eight, ten, and twelve has declined twenty-five, forty, and fifty percent respectively. In contrast, our messaging with alcohol and tobacco has been very effective. Messaging has been so effective that in a survey taken of driving habits, only seven percent of college students said that they drove after consuming alcohol, and sixteen percent that they said that they rode in a car with a driver who had used alcohol. Compare that to the statistics about marijuana. Thirty-one percent said that they drove after marijuana use, and a shocking forty-five percent said that they rode in a car with a driver who had used marijuana. There's a perception that it's somehow safer than alcohol. Considering students who use marijuana are sixty-five percent more likely to get into a car crash, and car accidents are the number-one cause of death in young people, these numbers should be concerning. The brain is not fully developed until the age of twenty-four. Because of this, studies show that adolescents are far more likely to engage in risky behavior. It is up to us, as adults, to send the right message in an effort to reduce and eliminate risk. A billboard on a main road that touts misleading statistics should not be the type of messaging our young people receive. As a community, we should be seeking ways to send a different message about marijuana. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to say?
Barnard Fage, 100 Wampatech Road. I really don't know where to start, but the first question I have to ask is this, why is this even in front of the planning board in the first place? I believe this is something that should be put to the voters, put it on the actual ballot. This way, you folks all have an understanding of what the public, or what the town of Hingham wants as a whole. We have twenty people in total in this room. I'm addressing the people who are going to be watching this on H-CAM, and ask them, do your own research. Go online, there are all kinds of things. I mean, when I hear some of these arguments from the substance abuse people, I mean, they mean well, but their arguments are completely misplaced, in my opinion. Another thing I believe is, what does this have to do with children? This is adult use of marijuana, which is now, or cannabis, excuse me, I prefer to use the word cannabis, which is now legal. We are not going to revisit the issue in the state. There has been a statewide ballot. The people decided, the legislature, after dragging its feet for the last twenty years, finally decided it was going to then get in action, and it's still dragging its feet, except when it comes to the prohibition. We have people who are passionately anti-cannabis, and they are doing everything they can to undermine the general will of the people. But there are other things I would like to bring up. First of all, we have over forty places, at least, that sell alcohol in this town. These places are all subject to planning board rules, to bylaws. If they screw up, they lose their license. Do we all agree?
Do we?
Do you agree? If an alcohol establishment...
I think you should make your comments. We're not going to respond to your questions.
Okay, I apologize. All right. No, actually, I don't apologize. I'm just a little bit nervous here. This is, to be treated, as most people believe, exactly like alcohol. And then when I hear this, you know, with the message that we are sending to our children, I believe the message that we are sending about children, and it basically is that your brain is still growing, and, you know, you're still forming all the delicate neural pathways, and you should not take anything that could grow a stunt or interfere with the growth, that are doctor's advice, and in spite of how old-fashioned all of us old folks seem to be and out of touch, we've been around a long time, we love you, we care about you, and that's what we should be teaching our children, not just ban everything, because they're going to get it anyway. Now, the arguments about the higher THC concentrations in cannabis, there is no difference between the cannabis of the sixties and the cannabis of today. There are different strains, there are different, there are all kinds of different things, but the bottom line is that when you have recreational cannabis, it's just like you will know exactly what you're buying. So you're not buying a can of beer, thinking you're getting a can of beer, and you wind up with a hundred-and-fifty-one proof alcohol. So right now, I mean, we subject, the people, if we continue, if we ban this, people are going to have to go outside the town, they're going to go to the black market, the black market, these people in the black market have every other thing you can imagine, fentanyl, all the real drugs that actually kill people. So this is something that I think we should take into consideration, and like I say again, put it in front of the actual, on the ballot, so people know it. Couple of other issues I'd like to bring. Oh, by the way, Amherst just allowed, they're allowing eight shops, and they're going to be a three percent tax. This was just announced today. Let's see. You know, all I hear from the anti-cannabis folks, the substance abuse folks, is the bad things about cannabis. We haven't talked about the liver problems with people, how it helps them, kidney problems, pancreatic, gastrointestinal, and all the other health issues, arthritis especially, that is helped by cannabis. Now, the fact is that whenever there is cannabis legalized in an area, the prescription death, the deaths to prescription overdose, painkiller, excuse me, the death due to opioid overdoses goes down somewhere in the vicinity of twenty-five to thirty percent. But you folks watching this, go online, do your own research. Don't rely on us, do your own research. There's this, there's a particular program, it's called the Emperor of Hemp. You may want to go check that out, watch it, and watch some of the other pro-cannabis things. The other thing is, in mid-July, hold on, let me, not only are the opioid-related deaths down, but the amount of painkillers that are prescribed, according to the studies that I've seen, and like I say, do your own research, the amount of prescription painkillers drops precipitously as soon as cannabis is available to the general public. And let's see, but I keep hearing about the message that we're sending to our children. The message is, basically, we want to send our kids, we are going to punish anybody who gives cannabis, alcohol, or any other illegal or not-prescribed product to an underage child, and we will be trying to find out who these people are and criminally charge them. That's what we already do, and I don't think recreational cannabis is going to have anything to do, unless you think that people are going to be giving it to children, which is insulting to adults. The message we're sending is, we want to send our kids, you should tell our kids, you should report people who are giving or selling any illegal products to your parents or the police. These are the messages that we should be sending to the kids, not that cannabis or anything else is bad. We want to send, the message, if you want, hold on, excuse me. You should never get, the message we want to send to our children is, you should never get behind the wheel or drive in an automobile with anybody who is impaired, and even if there is incredible peer pressure to do so. I believe we all understand what peer pressure is. The message that we want to send to our kids is, you don't have to make yourself senseless to have a good time, and if you feel you do, you should talk to somebody professionally about it, and we will find the funds to fund whatever counseling you need. The message we want to send to our kids is, if you're underage and buy, sell, or grow cannabis, you will be arrested, and your life could be permanently affected by an arrest. You can ask the air officer about that. Message we don't, the message is, if you have, excuse me, if the message is like some have stated, that the children think it's okay to use cannabis because it's legal, then we need to educate our children better. You know, because they say it's legal, we have all kinds of times to point this out to people, to children. Let's see. The message we are sending to the adults, or some people, is that the people who represent the prohibitionists don't think that you're responsible enough to look after your own affairs, and they will clearly believe that you can't be trusted to keep cannabis away from your children. Same message applies to alcohol. By the gateway drug theories, the amount of people who have used cannabis in the last ten thousand years are in the tens of millions. Nobody has ever died from a cannabis overdose. They die from the prohibition, but they do not die from the overdose. And, I mean, cannabis is a product, in the last eighty years, it has battled billions upon billions of dollars of special interests, highly-focused groups that have thrown everything you can imagine at it, and it has still survived. So there must be a reason. So I'm asking the people watching this, go online, do your own research. Ask that we put this in front of you, the voters. Do not hand it to a handful of people. They may be well-intentioned, but you people are smart enough, and you people represent, you are the voters. So please, these, this is what I believe you should do. Let me see, what else? There's more research now that's coming up, that cannabis helps reduce tumors. That's in the preliminary stage, and this research is making out, in spite of everything that's being thrown against it by the pharmaceutical industry that's, well, functioned. Arizona, somebody, a company spent a half a million dollars to specifically delete, to defeat a ballot question. That company was working on synthetic cannabis. So we have economic versus personal, you know, interests, or private, personal use interests. And for the record, I have absolutely no desire, I have, I am not in commercial cannabis, I have no desire to make any money off cannabis. To me, this is an issue of personal freedom, and the people have decided.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, you know, Barnard, you raised a couple of good questions. So you asked about the ballot, and so this board doesn't have the power to put it on the ballot.
But do you have the power to recommend it goes on the ballot?
Well, I think, like, ten percent of town voters have to petition the BOS.
Okay.
Put it, is that correct, Susan?
Well, it was...
That's what the chart says, if ten percent of town voters...
Well, can we ask the Hingham Cares Coalition to support putting it on the ballot?
Well, so, let's back on...
Would you people support putting it on the ballot?
It was on the ballot.
That's what it said.
Right.
It was on the ballot.
In November of two thousand and sixteen.
True.
And our town voted no by fifty-seven percent, just, that's the first ballot point. And then the second, what we're talking about is going towards town meeting, which is also...
No, we're not talking about going towards town meeting, I'm talking about it, the upcoming election.
What I'm saying is, what we're talking about tonight is zoning bylaw amendments towards town meeting. We're not talking about three people deciding for the town.
Right. But as I understand it right now, it's really up to the Board of Selectmen currently, according to the way the law has been changed, and you people are the buffer between the Board of Selectmen, am I correct?
No.
Well, we would...
That's why I ask, why are you people even involved in this?
Yeah, well, that's a good question. I mean, it's a really good question, because we didn't, we didn't ask to take this on.
This is, this is, this is the cat longing for the horse.
I mean, it wasn't like we said, hey, let's take this on.
The horse isn't even in the building.
So initially, I think, the issue involves a potential zoning bylaw amendment. So any zoning bylaw amendment generally comes from the planning board. It could also come from the Board of Selectmen, and I think another board, but usually, in Hingham historically, it's come from us. That's why this was kind of thrown in our backyard.
And my, and my issue is, do you, or do you not, and do the selectmen, who are going to be watching this, feel it is prudent to have the actual will of the voters? What they are currently, because in fact, the latest, the latest polls that are coming out, and more and more people are supporting recreational cannabis. That's a fact, and as time, I mean, it is going to be eventually legal for recreational, sold in Hingham, even if it's defeated this time, because when you, when the town people and all the powers that be in this town start seeing people driving to other towns, and the amount of money that is being raised, they're just going to see ka-ching, 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 money that we're not getting as a town. And when people's heads do not explode, and we don't have pot-smoking zombies walking around the streets, and all the arguments that we're hearing are no longer valid, it's just a matter of time. And that's the way cannabis seems to be going. It's sort of like the turtle and the hare race. And the other issue, there was one more issue I wanted to, hold on a second.
I think let's, I think we, we don't have as much time tonight as we would all like, and there are a lot of people in the room, so I'd love to give other folks a chance.
But I would like to end this segment with, in, I believe it was seventy-two or seventy-three, we put in the state lottery. There were many towns and many people who were a hundred percent against the state lottery, they thought it was bad, and was going to lead to gambling the whole nine yards. What would happen if Hingham had included itself and didn't have any money from the lottery and banned lottery sales? So that's, this is basically the same thing. The public wants it, and put it in front of the public, and whatever you folks can do in the planning board, and whatever recommendations you can make to the selectmen, I think it'd be better, because then you'd actually know what the people want. Thank you.
I think this has to do with onsite...
Jen, do you have any questions?
Let's ask maybe also, I'm also, do you have a question on that?
No, just the chart says if ten percent of town voters petition, selectmen must place the question on the ballot.
No, that's, that's only with respect to the onsite consumption.
Consumption, okay.
So I think Jen already said it, there was a ballot vote, it was in November two thousand and sixteen, the legislature, when it revised the act in June, I mean, excuse me, in July two thousand and seventeen, created this right for towns that voted a majority against to consider, to consider these different options. So at this point, and I believe Mary provided the board with an email to, that John Coughlin and I put together yesterday regarding why, under general principles of municipal law, if you're going to regulate use on private property, the case law is very clear, it needs to be done through a zoning amendment. So whether it's, you know, banning any or all types, whether it's regulating it any as to location, et cetera, the state law, John Coughlin and I feel is pretty clear that zoning amendments are the appropriate route. There are other aspects that are not in gold, or green, on the chart, that can be done by other methods, whether it's town meeting vote, other regulations of other boards, but any regulation of time, place, and manner, allowing, not allowing, we recommend, as council to the town, that the appropriate place is through the planning board. If the planning board felt no regulations were necessary, as the chart shows, the moratorium will expire, and these may be allowed in any of the areas, other retail, manufacturing, cultivation would be allowed. So those are really the, what's in front of the board, you know, recommend nothing or recommend any number of options, and, right, and that's kind of what the, you're considering tonight.
Yep. Thank you. Who would like to speak? Yes, Kathy?
Do you have a comment?
Please.
My name is Catherine Salisbury, ten Ridgewood Crossing. I have a couple of comments about this. I was just upstairs at the planning board, excuse me, at the Board of Selectmen, and I recommended to them that they sponsor an article, can be a zoning article, for basically putting it to the voters to vote, whether they want to ban retail sales of recreational marijuana. And they seemed very receptive. That's all I can say. If failing that, and if you don't think that's your role, that's fine, ten citizens can sponsor a zoning article. We don't have to wait for the selectmen. Ten citizens can file it by December first, that's the important date, December first. But I bet I could rustle ten people up right here, right now, I could write the article, and I get their names and their signatures, and it would be on the two thousand and eighteen ballot. We would need two-thirds voters' sign, you know, approval at the town meeting, but it's worth giving a shot to test the will of the townspeople, whether or not they want to ban it or not. They have the right to try, certainly. As far as the regulations, I understand why you're doing the regulations. If the ban should fail, let's say Article seventeen, then we're in trouble, then we're in trouble. But if the planning board has their regulations, you know, of marijuana sales in retail stores, right, Article eighteen, then that could pass, and the town would be in good shape. I would point out, since I know from experience, having run a tobacco control program over in Easton for five communities, that enforcement of sales to minors, you know, trying to interdict sales to minors, which we did laboriously, quarterly, for a number of years, is a big pain in the neck. It's, Jim Wells used to run that program for the town of Hingham, before the state took away all the funding for the program. I'm proud that I was part of the effort to reduce the number of smokers, it was, I started twenty-five percent of the population of Massachusetts, and by the time the program was over, it was down to like twenty-two percent or twenty-one percent. So our efforts did. But why you would want to voluntarily bring a retail store in with the necessity then of taking minors over and trying to buy pot, you know, and issuing fines, and civil fines, and all this kind of stuff, is just awful. It's what a nuisance. So, you know, I'm torn, I'm torn, you know, I kind of want to ban, I don't want regulations, I think it'll be not good, I think it's a gateway drug, and I don't think we want it in our town, but, you know, you have the right to regulations, I'm sure you'll write very good ones. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, please.
Hello, my name's Mark Rockoff, on thirty-six Pleasant Street. I'd just like to make a comment, looking at the decision flow chart that was just passed out this, this evening, it talks, it starts at the beginning, does a town want to ban marijuana establishments for recreational use? And I would just support the first two speakers this evening, and just say, yes, I believe the town should vote to ban it. The reason I take is the, as the first two speakers address, it's an issue for the health of children, particularly adolescents. There, I would encourage everybody to look at the literature, there is very little debate in the medical literature about this topic. You can go to the American Academy of Pediatrics, and they have repeatedly reaffirmed their opposition to legalization of recreational marijuana, particularly because of its harmful effects on, on the developing brain... effects on, on the developing brain, particularly adolescents. I will forward to Mary tomorrow, an article that appeared in the Journal of Pediatrics yesterday, just electronically in advance of publication. It's called "Understanding the Highs and Lows of Adolescent Marijuana Use." It's a commentary by the Substance Abuse People at Children's Hospital. Just to quote a few things from this, they talk about how in the last 20 years, rates of alcohol and tobacco use have continued to decline. But rates of marijuana use is an outlier here. This is going up. It's been going up in every state that legalizes it for recreational use. In particular, in Colorado, the number of adolescent users has increased by 20 percent in the last two years alone, right after legalization. In their article, they go on to discuss some of the common myths about this is safe, this is okay. There is no question, this is not safe. I'll just quote a few things here. "Dropping perceptions of harm arise from the misconceptions that marijuana is healthy because it's natural, or safe because it's legal. Both of these," and I quote, "both of these ideas are false. Cannabis is known to be particularly detrimental to the developing adolescent brain. The message they give is unambiguous. Avoiding marijuana use during adolescence and young adult years is best for health." So, this is not an issue for adults, competent adults who want to do what they want with their lives. But I would strongly support this town not bringing in a drug that we know is harmful for children. The experience in other states just shows it's going to be used the more available it is, and I don't think our town needs to contribute to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak?
Can we have a counter-arguments?
We're not debating this evening, no.
I'd just, I'd like to state that a lot of these-
Well, let me, first of all, you're not going to state from there. You'd need to come to the microphone, and I'm waiting to see if others would like to speak before I give you another turn.
I would just say that we shouldn't engage in personalities.
Yeah, well, right, and as at all of our meetings, we're not going to engage in personalities, and we're not having a debate back and forth with the board tonight either. Okay. Bonner, you had something to add?
Bonner Fage, 100 Wapptec Road. I ask again, what does this have to do with children? I mean, if this were alcohol, could we make the same argument for alcohol? I don't believe that responsible adults who raise their children are going to be giving cannabis to their children. So, all the stats about basically the difference in THC levels and everything, it doesn't apply. We are responsible adults, and I believe we can raise our own children, and I don't believe anybody in their right mind is going to be giving cannabis to their children.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, if no one else, oh, please.
I live in Marshfield.
Would you say-
I'm a pastor at New North Church.
Thank you.
I just want to say that-
Will you state your name and address?
Steve Arcella.
Thank you.
Sorry. I just want to say that-
And will you please direct your comments to me? And we're not going to-
Okay, but for you. I was in the eighth grade when I had my first cigarette, and I think I was a sophomore in high school when I had my first beer. There were no adults involved, and yet, that's what I did. That's out there.
Thank you. Okay. So, if we're wrapping up public comment, it looks like, unless someone else wants to come forward. So, before we end the public comment, I did receive a statement from the chair of the Board of Selectmen today, Mary Power, and she cannot be here because they're meeting at the exact same time as us, but she did ask me to read her statement to you tonight. "Over the past several weeks, we have been working to understand the implications of the marijuana law that was adopted through a ballot vote last November and amended by our state legislature this past July. The spring 2017 town meeting voted to establish a one-year moratorium banning marijuana establishments. That moratorium expires June 30th, 2018. Like all communities in the Commonwealth, we need to decide whether to allow these establishments to operate in Hingham, and if so, how to regulate them. We also need to decide whether to impose a sales tax and whether to prohibit consumption in public spaces. Over the past few weeks, the chairs of the Board of Selectmen and Planning Board, along with town staff and town council, have been working to understand the scope, timing, and options for possible town meeting action. We've also talked about the roles that our respective boards will play in preparing warrant articles for town meeting's consideration. I am mindful of the significant time and effort that it will take to develop regulations, and that they will not be needed if town meeting votes to ban marijuana establishments. However, based on what we know right now, I believe it is necessary to develop regulations for three reasons. One, zoning articles for the April 2018 town meeting are due on December 1st. Two, zoning regulations may help town meeting decide whether or not to ban marijuana establishments beyond June 30th of 2018. And, three, if an additional ban is not supported by town meeting, we need to have regulations ready for the meeting's consideration. Council has advised us that our existing moratorium could be nullified if town meeting votes to allow marijuana establishments prior to June 30th. The Board of Selectmen will take the lead on policy questions, including the question of whether to propose a ban for town meeting's consideration. We will begin discussing these questions on November 21st, which is two months before the deadline for submitting non-zoning-related warrant articles. Over the next few months, your elected and appointed boards and committees, along with town staff, will continue to coordinate our work and share citizen feedback with one another. We appreciate the input that we have received thus far, and look forward to hearing from the citizens of Hingham on this matter. Mary Power, November 7th, 2017." And so, with that, we're going to close for now, the, for this evening, the public comment portion of this meeting, and we'll move to, as I mentioned earlier, deliberation, because this board has not, this is our second time meeting to hear about it, but we have not yet begun to deliberate with one another and start to talk through where we think we should go from here. So, that being said, what I think would make sense, subject to your agreement, would be if we each take a couple of minutes to sort of state where we are on the issue, and then start to have a discussion from there. I don't know if either of you would like to start?
Sure, I guess I'll start. So, I guess for me, I think Kathy made an excellent point. I think we need to answer the, I think as a community, we need to answer the threshold question of whether or not a ban is imposed or not. And I think this board should, should react to that initial question. So, if, if the voters at town meeting decide that they do not want to ban, then I think we, we should be prepared to advance a zoning article that applies, that addresses time, place, and manner. If the voters at town meeting vote to ban the substance, then I think we, we need to be prepared with a zoning article that will support that. But I am of the mindset that we need to let the voters decide it, to the extent possible, and have them do that at town meeting. But I'm glad to hear that, that we got that letter today. I was concerned that we weren't going to have that input, but that's good to know that, and I'm glad Kathy mentioned her comments as well. But that's, so I think if the selectmen are going to advance a general bylaw question, this board should probably advance two zoning bylaws to ban based on the first question, and then a time, place, manner bylaw based on the answer to the first question. That would be my position.
I, I think I agree with that. You know, the, I, the only reason I say that is because I feel like the town has spoken pretty strongly just about 12 months ago today. Right? I mean, the, the recreational marijuana question was on the ballot in a presidential election year, which will generate more voter turnout than any other local election that we are going to have. There was certainly an awful lot of money spent on both sides advocating for recreational marijuana or against recreational marijuana, so that's not like there were voters who were uninformed. Clearly, there were plenty of informed around the Commonwealth and voted in favor of it, and this town voted against it by a pretty strong margin. So, I, I suppose I should, you know, I, I feel like the town has, has made a statement on that as it is. But I also think that we need to have our own process and go through town meeting, and I heartily agree that we should have both set for, for a ban or for regulations.
Could I just add something to that? I think you make a good point about what happened at the presidential election. Obviously, presidential elections tend to yield, I think the last one yielded 80 percent, probably about 80, 75, 80 percent of voters came out. So, that's a, a strong representation of a town. The issue with, the issue of what happened there, though, it's, it's, the vote carried by less than 60 percent. It was 57 percent.
So, it was up to you.
Right. So, to let people know, a town, a town meeting zoning amendment requires two-thirds. So, if that was our, even though I agree with you, it was, it was a strong majority, the, now we get into the issue of, okay, what happens if either of our amendments fail to obtain the necessary two-thirds? Where a general bylaw would require a majority, the, I mean, the, the scenario could be, and I thought about this, you know, a lot this last week, is if the BOS advances a general bylaw, and that yields a majority either way, both of our proposed zoning amendments could not, could fail to get the necessary two-thirds. And that is a potential, you know, scenario. So, but you make a good point, though, about that. Yeah, very good point about that.
Yeah, so, I agree with, you know, the premise of what both of you are saying in terms of what I think the right course for us is. I would like to also say that I appreciate all of the public input that we've heard, and we continue to daily receive written input from folks, and it is informative. And I think that, I agree that the threshold decision is, are we banning it or not? And that that would need to be the first question at town meeting before you get to the time, place, and manner. I want to point out a couple of other things, which are that if that's the direction we go, and if we have a ban, and I know we've already covered this, but I think it bears repeating, we covered it in the presentation, I should say, last week. We have not yet discussed it. But as a reminder, as you just pointed out, Bill, if there was a ban at town meeting and that failed, and a regulation of time, planet, place, and manner, and that failed, we would be left with no regulation. And which would mean that it would be treated like any other retail use under our zoning bylaw. And I suspect that that is not a result that many folks in town would want. So, it's incumbent on us to continue to gain public input so that we draft a really good time, place, and manner regul-, you know, bylaw amendment, so that it could prevail if the ban were to fail. I also will say, and this is a little bit of a different point than what we've been discussing so far, but it hasn't been touched upon tonight either, there are a lot of outstanding questions on this matter. Separate from how you feel personally about marijuana, the state is not yet done deciding how they are going to regulate marijuana, these marijuana establishments. And as we covered last week, as Susan and Mary covered for us last week, they are not even going to have their final regulations out until March 15th. And it seems to me that we, as a town, that it wouldn't be good government for us to do anything other than propose a ban, because it seems to me that a lot of people would think that if we don't even know what the regulations are yet at the state level, then we're not ready to put forth, you know, final time, place, and manner regulations. And that it, it would be prudent of us, as a result, to put forward for the ban for that reason alone. I think, you know, that's slightly a different angle on that, but, you know, I know that has come up as a concern over and over in terms of all of the outstanding questions. You know, Mary and Susan, every conversation we have, there's, there's always some component of it that goes back to, well, we're not sure. You know, the Mass Municipal lawyers are saying this, but none of it has been tested, none of it is fi-, it's not all final. And that is a real concern for me, and strengthens my belief that, you know, the primary question for all of us is whether or not to ban it.
I don't, can I add something else?
Yeah.
So, Susan sent over a case today, too, that I was able to read before I came over. It's a Board of Selectmen of Rainham case, Rayco Investment Corporation. And in that case, the town of Rainham passed a general bylaw prohibiting the use, and the Supreme Judicial Court said that that is not enough. They said that if the town wanted to ban that specific use, and it wasn't marijuana, it was a different use, that it should have been passed as a zoning amendment. So, the threshold question will not be enough. I think based on my interpretation, Susan, would you agree with that, based on my read of this Rainham case, Rainham case, or?
Yes, both myself and John Coughlin have given the town the opinion that whether it be a ban of any or an all types of medical, I'm sorry, marijuana establishments, or any sort of time, place, and manner, that a zoning amendment would be required pursuant to this case law, which is pretty consistent through the decades in the state. The, the question of the general bylaw comes up because the statute itself is ambiguous in which it says, "Communities may do X, Y, and Z by adopting an ordinance or a bylaw without stating what kind." And so, the, the recommendations that are just coming out of kind of municipal organizations is if, if your town is contemplating a ban of all or a portion of these types, do both. Because if you can pass the zoning, then clearly you have enough votes to pass the general, and do it as belt and suspenders. So, but to your specific question, yes, we both agree, John Coughlin and I, that a general bylaw in and of itself would probably be subject to challenge based on those line of cases in Massachusetts.
And when is the deadline for submitting general bylaw?
I believe it's January 21st.
And that can be submitted by?
Anyway, well, the Board of Selectmen generally insert the general warrants. If requested by boards, they'll insert them on behalf of boards, or there can be petition articles, the same as with zoning.
Okay.
Articles.
Okay.
So, I think, so based on that, I think procedurally, it makes sense that the Board of Selectmen advance that threshold question. Does the town want it or not? And then, we have two zoning amendments in the queue to address the answer to those questions. So, if the question is no, is, if answered no, then I think the next item up would practically make, do you want a ban by two-thirds? If the question is, we do want it, then we go, do you want these time, place, manner regulations? So, I think it would be practical of this board to advance two, based on what the town says about what, what it wants to do with establishments or not. So, we could, you know, put forth two competing-
Yep.
...amendments. That might make the most sense.
Right.
And it might, it also might be the most fair to both sides.
Especially as Jen's point, that the time, place, and manner needs to be measured enough that it's not so draconian that it will fail as well.
Right.
So, we, if we, if we plan for both outcomes on the, on the Selectmen's piece, we have to, we have to do that in a pretty measured way.
Right.
And I guess the other point, question I had to, Susan, so with the more, with the town meeting being on the 23rd of April, and we're getting some information from the Attorney General's Office saying, well, you may, the moratorium may be compromised as of April 1st. What's the town's position on those 22 days between applications between 1 April and 23 April?
Council's position, and when I say council, it's myself, and together with John Coughlin, is we've reviewed the statute and the applicable provisions of the statute. We talked about it, this a little bit in the presentation last week. There's a provision that, and again, it's all those kind of negatives, it's like a sentence full of negatives, that you have to kind of get to the positive to read them all together, that assuming the applicant to the Cannabis Control Commission satisfies every other requirement, okay, so assuming that, that the Cannabis Control Commission shall issue a license unless the municipality informs the commission that there is a bylaw that comply, a bylaw or ordinance in effect as of the date of the application that complies with the state act and would prohibit the establishment from locating in that community. So, to give an example, to try to put it in more clear English, if an applicant came in on April 1st with an application, and they wanted to locate in Hingham, and they met every other requirement, Hingham would get notice of that, and Hingham, if it was the case, would send a letter to the Cannabis Control- and Hingham, if it was the case, would send a letter to the Cannabis Control Commission and say, "The town of Hingham has a bylaw in effect, currently in effect as of the date of that application, which would prohibit that establishment from locating in Hingham." So then the question becomes, would the moratorium satisfy that? As we discussed, again, under the nomenclature that's being used in the state, Hingham is a no community to the extent that on a date and time, November two thousand sixteen, the majority voted no. As a quote-unquote "no" community, Hingham may, um, ban establishments by town meeting vote. Another ballot vote's not required. Hingham had a town meeting vote in April two thousand seventeen, in which case, in which time it put forward and adopted, duly adopted, a zoning amendment, which is in the zoning bylaw. It's a temporary moratorium, but it does ban the use through June thirtieth. And, um, town council and I feel that that is, um, a strong argument that the town can make. And so that's kind of, you know, it's not up to council, it would be up to citizens or the Board of Selectmen, where they want to try to, you know, call a special town meeting before April first. That's not, that's not a decision, obviously, for council. Some towns, such as Hanover, are doing that. You know, and we do have to put the little asterisk on, is we believe that, based on the wording of the act and the way the moratorium was adopted, um, that that is a strong position for the town to be in. But it has never yet been tested because we're, this is all brand new. So, um, we believe the town has a strong argument. We cannot say, because there's no precedent to this, whether or not it would be challenged, and if it was challenged, whether it would be challenged successfully. So that's not a black and white answer, um, but it's the, you know, the best answer I can give at this time.
Okay. You know, I wonder if we should talk through, I've had conversations with Susan and Mary about, um, you know, Hanover is having a special town meeting, and they are addressing this as a single issue, and they're doing it very soon. And, um, I think that, at the end of the day, there are pros and cons to doing it that way. I don't know that we would necessarily be in control of even making that happen anyway, but it's something that we could, um, talk about, and Susan could fill us in on some of the, the legal research and thinking that has gone on, um, related to that for our town. If you wouldn't mind, Susan, I mean.
Oh, sure.
We, part of the reason it comes up is because for, um, a general bylaw, it's not effective until ninety days after it's enacted. So then you start to back into, if we really, really want to avoid this April first date, this potential exposure between April first and April twenty-third, then, you know, one potential remedy to do that would be to hold a special town meeting, and, um, but obviously.
Before January first.
Before January first, right. So obviously, we're running up into that very quickly, so it's, it's unlikely at this point. But, you know, the thought process was that the advantages to that were that we would, um, you can correct me if I'm wrong. We would put the question before the town, similar questions to what we've discussed tonight, you know, do we want to ban? The risks that have been identified by council are that if we put up a ban in a special town meeting in December, and it fails, what does that do to our moratorium? Then do we lose the moratorium by having done that? Because is that town action then sort of take away the idea that you have put forth, this, this moratorium? So, you know, that's a risk that, I think that, I, I mean, I don't, I don't know that we want to go that route when we have just a limited risk with the April first to April twenty-third.
I mean, it sounds like, Susan, you're pretty confident that the moratorium won't be compromised.
We feel that, based on existing law and other, kind of generally, in other circumstances, that this, you know, this is a reasonable, defensible argument. But this is, this is brand-new territory. We, the state has never had a use that I'm aware of where it's legalized in the state, but an individual town could do it. Now, there are, that, there may be exceptions. For example, I don't know how many, if any, are left, but the concept of dry towns, where there's some towns that just don't issue liquor licenses. But then again, the ta- the individual towns have the authority over issuing liquor licenses. Whereas in this case, these licenses are issued by the state. So we really don't have a, a parallel example to give. And I think because of that, this is the argument that, um, the town would make if challenged. We believe it's a strong argument, but we can't say it's, you know, bulletproof. And, you know, I know you appreciate, kind of as a lawyer, Bill, that, and Jen as well, and Lauren, I don't know if you're an attorney, no.
No, but I'd get anyone.
That to kind of give an, to give an absolute, you know, it would be, it would actually be, you know, irresponsible of me to give an absolute on that, because we, we don't know.
Right.
We don't know.
But we can't call it a special town meeting, anyway. Let's leave that to the people that work on that.
Right. Now, I just thought it's worth raising.
But no, that's a good point, I thought about that, too. I mean, we need to be doing that, but that's, that's not in our.
So in terms of process, it sounds like we're agreeing, right, that by December first, our board would put forward a ban question? A ban warrant article, sorry, and separately a time, place, and manner, um, article. So in terms of process, I think if we want to start talking about that, we're planning to vote on zoning bylaw amendments, November, at our November twenty-seventh meeting. I would think, assuming that you both agree, that we would ask Susan to work with Mary to come up with the ban language and the, um, time, place, and manner language that would make sense. But I think that we're not, we're not scheduled to have the meetings between now and then that would bring it down to the granular level. So we would be sending up a broad, um, time, place, and manner regulation that we would further refine, um, in the January public hearing process.
But there's only one, one issue with the TPM, uh, time, place, and manner regulation, and that is, where do we put it?
Exactly. Right.
And I'll tell you why. We, it would be unfair to people in this town to say, oh, we're gonna regulate it to go into the shipyard, or we're gonna regulate it to go downtown, or the square, or Derby Street, or the industrial park. We've historically placed, um, you know, the adult uses was permitted, is permitted in, zoned in the industrial park, medical marijuana. But I think this is an issue where, um, after the last time we tried to do, um, tattoo parlors up there, people in South King were very, very upset about it. And, um, so the question is, we're, we're to be permitted. I mean.
Well, and that's what we need to wrestle with.
I'm of the mindset that maybe we don't zone it into a specific part of town. It's either, again, we're following the will of the town here. If the town wants it, I think it'd be tough for us to say, yeah, it's only gonna be in North Hingham, or in South Hingham. That might not be fair to folks to do that.
Uh, Jen, may I just make a couple of, I, I understand your timing constraints. But kind of related to Bill's point of the where. The, the other aspect of this that has to be kind of kept in mind is marijuana establishments are not just marijuana retailers. If you remember when we went through the PowerPoint, um, marijuana establishments is a catch-all, and there's actually subdefinitions. And there's marijuana retailers, there is marijuana cultivators, there's marijuana manufacturers, and then there is businesses that sell marijuana accessories. And so, um, if you, if you, I'm trying to think, and I, I mean, obviously, you know, Mary and I really haven't had a chance, and obviously we haven't had kind of direction from the board.
Right.
On how to break it down. But, um, you know, manufacturing is only permitted in certain, currently. So let's just take retail generally, manufacturing generally. And cultivation is an interesting one, because, um, I guess it would fall under the agriculture not protected, right? But if you look at agriculture not protected, it is allowed within A two in residential districts. So that would be kaput cultivation, and particularly, um, craft cultivation, which is in somebody's barn in their backyard.
Right.
It, within A two, and so I, I don't know if your schedule allows, and I, and I know, I don't know, you know, how much time you were hoping, or, you know, to spend on this tonight, or how detailed, much detail or not. But I would recommend that, um, at least thinking through location town, because all the other broad rush, if you say there's gonna be a radius restriction, or parking requirements, or there are all those other types of things, I do believe that Mary could present something to the board that was broad enough, or gave enough information, that the board could fine-tune it during hearings and stay within the scope of the original article. But I'm not sure how you put up something to the Board of Selectmen, because if you say, okay, we'll allow it in, I'm just making this up, okay? Business A, but not business B, or not in a retail group in industrial district, which is like derby shops, or not in the industrial district, overlay district with the shipyard. If that's what you put out there, and that's what people expect, but then it comes back in the hearings and says, oh, no, we like business A better than business B, now are you so beyond the scope that you need to resubmit it and re-advertise and start over? So I, I think that there's a little, there's, there's some, there's some, you know, and could that happen? Yes, if you start getting into the hearings, and you're like, you know what? Based on all this feedback we're getting, we really need to rework what you additionally proposed, then it, you need a request to the Board of Selectmen to submit a replacement article. They have to agree to submit it, because they have to December first. Presumably, you're all working together, so, but that would be at the discretion of the Board of Selectmen. Then they would send it back down to the Planning Board, it would get re-advertised, and you'd have to then reopen the hearing, but you can kind of continue from where you were. But the closer you're getting to town meeting.
Right, the harder.
The more you're getting into warrant supplement land, right? So, I mean, those are just kind of the time constraints of.
So you're saying it's preferable to make some decisions prior to December first?
I, I, I think because, well, you, listen, no matter what you propose, depending on what happens in public hearings, you could decide to change your approach significantly enough that you have to kind of submit a new article and, and kind of technically start the hearing process over again. But I think if you don't have, like, because if you put up a warrant article and say, okay, these marijuana establishments, and don't say where they're gonna be put, then you're starting out with the premise of they're allowed anywhere. So what you're doing when you come to the hearings is now we're saying, oh, no, only in these places. Now, the question is, are you getting so far, or wait, we thought all the people who are in favor of them are thinking, oh, wait a minute, they're gonna allow them everywhere, they're just gonna regulate them. Now, so they don't come to the hearings. And then all of a sudden, you're like, nope, we're only allowing them in one, two, three places. They're like, wait a minute, that's not what we understood it was gonna be. So, like, it's a little bit of a gray area as to when you start getting so outside the scope of the warrant art, that the recommended motion gets outside the scope. But it's a, it's a risk, particularly with an issue that could be a very high-interest issue by town meeting voters. Did that make sense?
Yeah, no, that makes sense. Mary, you look like you wanted to say something.
I know. So, yes, I agree with all of that. Not having had the direction from the board as to where you wanted to go, I did start thinking about this a little bit. And, um, it is gonna be very involved. There's gonna be likely changes upstairs. As we talked about at the last hearing, probably every single section of the bylaw is going to be touched by a time, place, and manner. But I think one of the most important things is where it goes in your use schedule. And as Susan said, you'll probably have a line under commercial, you might have a line under agricultural. I mean, there's different elements of this, that it's not like you just add in under the retail uses, marijuana establishments. So the board is gonna have to think about, for craft cultivation, which zones will it fit? Or where might it fit? And my understanding is, as far as scope, is that you could reduce where it was allowed. But you couldn't necessarily, if you said craft cultivation could only be in this one zone, you refer that article upstairs, and then you decide that, oh, you wanted to propose that it would be in a different zone, that would be broadening the scope. But if you sent it upstairs identifying more than one zone, and during your hearing process, you eliminated the zones, you narrowed the available zones for that use, for example, that would be narrowing the scope. But there will be, you know, each one of those slides that we talked about, the board will have to make a decision before the language goes upstairs as to what's your starting point. Okay, that doesn't mean that's your finishing point.
Okay, so are you envisioning, Mary, then, that maybe now that you know the direction we're heading in, you would draft something and give it to us for the November twenty-seventh meeting? And at that point, we would work through some of it and understand? Or do you think that there are decisions that we need to make prior to you even heading down that path?
Staff has enough direction to draft kind of a, something for the board to work from. What the board needs to decide is, do you want to meet to talk about it prior to November twenty-seventh? And some of that becomes logistical as far as how, you know, pulled together a document you want to start editing. Or if you just want to have a meeting to talk about threshold questions without necessarily seeing a fleshed-out draft, we can certainly do that at any point. The board could also determine that you're gonna hear it on November twenty-seventh and have yourself available for maybe the twenty-eighth or twenty-ninth. You know, because you do need to vote to send it upstairs by December first. When you have that, you know, conversation, given scheduling is the board's discretion. Staff will meet your schedule.
Right, okay. What do you think on process, Bill?
Um, well, I think we should keep it as broad as possible. I mean, I don't know how we're gonna be able to get it down to one or two zones.
Oh, you mean.
I mean, in terms of.
In general, you mean as a final product, never mind.
Oh, yeah, well, yeah, well, I mean, in terms of, I mean, what Mary said about getting ready for the twenty-seventh is, is great. Thank you for doing that, Mary, for us, particularly, um, with a short timeframe. But I mean, in terms of where we, ultimately, we're gonna try to zone this use. We're gonna work on it for us, because I think a lot of people are gonna come out from that part of town and say, nah, no, thank you. Don't put it in, don't put it here. And then that's gonna impact, you know, how we do regulate time, place, and manner, and whether or not we ever get a two-thirds on that particular portion.
Right, right.
If the board starts to talk about a draft on the marijuana on November twenty-seventh, is the board willing to schedule a secondary meeting on the twenty-eighth or twenty-ninth? Because if you're discussing a draft, and the board says, like you just did the other night with another article, you said, okay, staff, please change that, please change that, fix this, then we'll have something more filed to, to vote on.
Yeah, that makes sense. I can meet other than those minutes.
Sure, yeah, yeah, I think because of the importance of this issue, we'll make another meeting that week.
Yep.
Yeah. I, if this would be helpful, um, so town, kind of town meeting and talking about recommended motions within the scope of the warrant article is a decision that's made by, typically by the town moderator. Um, and he would probably consult with, um, John Coughlin as town council. So what I can do is, um, if you'd like me to, is talk to John Coughlin and say, you know, and there's kind of some law, although, again, you know, marijuana is its own thing, but there is law around scope of article, motions in connection, whatever. And try to get some sort of, at least, parameters.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful. I think that would be really helpful.
You know, how, how broad can you go in sending something upstairs?
Yep.
And then if you start moving from that, it, for a recommended motion, and that applies to the advisory committee as well, because you make a recommended motion, but ultimately, they're going to make a recommended motion, which may or may not match the Planning Board's recommended motion. Hopefully, in most cases, they're the same, because that leads to less confusion. But it doesn't have to, their, their motion doesn't have to match your motion. And their motion's the one that appears in the warrant. So, um, you know, that's, you know, maybe just trying to understand that procedural issue might help. And then the other thi- you know, the other aspect, and it's pretty easy, just by flipping to the chart on, in Section three A, you say, here's retail uses, this is where they're allowed now. Here's agricultural, this is where they'd be allowed, and what type of permit now? Here is manufacturing, right?
Right.
And so then you're saying, you know, within this basket that currently exists, would we allow it in any of these places or not, right? So it's not like you're starting from scratch, because at least you have general frameworks that are already in the bylaw to start with.
Right, that makes sense. And yes, I think, if it wasn't clear, please do, um, ask John Coughlin to help guide us with the parameters and, uh... the parameters and I think that's our process. I think we have set out a plan, at least for this month.
Okay, so our goal right now is the 27th?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, with likely another meeting that week to refine that which you get to us by the 27th.
Ideally, we'll get it to you ahead of the 27th, so we'll be, you know, working on it.
Okay.
And at least there's lots of different parameters, so.
Yeah, okay. Well, that sounds good. Do you have-
It's going to be a good town meeting. Put your seatbelt on.
All right, I don't think we have anything else tonight, do we?
Get ready to debate, everybody.
No, we don't. All right. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, we're adjourned. Thank you all for coming. Yep. There we go, away we go.